Is there the ability to increase our airspace or what they do as?
There would be, you know, one thing that would happen as a result, um, this, uh, this tax later, once that instead of the runway, your overall airspace capacity would get increased because of the ability of aircraft to land and exit there and go faster and not have to cross the runway to get back and forth. So you can increase your airspace capacity without linking the runway or adding the runway. Right now you have sufficient wing coverage and orientation to accommodate all the operations that you have there for today and that the air, the capacity around there for today is well, well beyond what the twenty car rides in.
So the, and based on the new development to the west, wouldn't, wouldn't be the ability to ever add a whole separate runway?
Not, not on this site. The, uh, what would dictate that is the separation of business between the zigzagged runway, the future runway. Yet for some reason it was, it wasn't in which would be tough to justify just given other operations. We would have to be somewhere over here or over there, but we don't foresee that, that level of activity driving an additional runway in any way you're asking.
One of the concerns that has come up in the past, and I know there's a much bigger picture, okay? There's a whole lot that goes with that blue area there that we haven't gotten to. But one of the concerns is that we're talking about adding twenty-seven hangars. I don't think we have twenty-seven more citizens in Sherman who own airplanes. So in order for this whole thing to come together, we need to be able to show to our citizens here in Sherman that we are making enough money off of this airport to justify the expense. And I mean, there's, there's gonna take, you know, there's a lot that goes into this. And as I said, I, I went to the meeting and was very informative. I was there, you know, and so I know what the big picture of where we're headed is. But just, if we just look at this, our own residents, I'm not sure that they unders, will understand why we need twenty-seven more hangars at the amount of money that's gonna be spent. So I think we need to make sure that we get the message out there of what the big picture is as to where we're going with this. Because otherwise, I can understand why they're, you know, I have had some people ask me, you know, where are these people coming from that are gonna have these hangars? Where are we gonna get the money? You know? And if they're not living in Sherman, and they're not eating at our restaurants, they're not, you know, shopping at our stores, et cetera. But that's coming with the picture. That's where we're headed with this, we're hoping.
Yeah, and that, that's a great point. I would say, um, there'll undoubtedly be more discussions just about the airport, its operations, the expansion, the, the, uh, or form of financial statements about, um, the impacts of these things that he's spoken about. But I'll tell you overall, at a thirty thousand foot view, see what I did there? At a thirty thousand foot view, the intent is that the airport operations support themselves, right? That they're not supported by the general tax revenues of the city, that the activities of the airport, whether it's fuel sales or income rentals or, you know, X, Y, Z, um, that that supports the operations of the airport. And we believe that it can.
Thank you.
So, but, but there'll be more discussions. There won't be any decisions made about growth or building hangars or, you know, uh, you know, spending money at the airport that happens apart from council discussion out here in the budget process.
Thank you.
So how did you gather the information where everybody wants to be in Sherman to use the hangars and such? Like some type of a survey or?
Yeah, that, that came from when we were speaking with our state committee, um, when the John, John Cooper operates something, somebody out there. He services pilots that come in from all over, where they have their planes worked on service during Sherman. He also maintains the, the list of, uh, of, uh, the waiting list for, for hangar space for Sherman. So he's actively monitoring that, that list and he failed to verify. I think it was six plus years, I think people, some folks have been on this list, recent and through and rechecked. You know, people interested, they're saying, yeah, like I live here with my, my plane somewhere else. I'm paying high rent and I'm driving too far. I'd much rather be in another street. What am I hanging here and enjoying having you here for us?
Thank you.
Mr. Barr, I'd just like to ask a quick question if I.
Quickly.
Uh, it, it's a fuel issue and I see you're, uh, bringing in jet fuel. And I've been in, uh, in a situation where I've seen what happens when you have two similar fuels together in an aircraft like that. Are these fueling stations gonna be far enough apart and well enough identified for there's no snakes made and putting the wrong fuel in the wrong aircraft?
Yes, that's, that's why we have separated, uh, on, on separate sides of that, that the fueling island. It's not, you don't want any.
Well, you're, you're saying on the fueling island, is the fueling island one location or are they gonna be in two separate?
We had it in two separate locations for one for jet and one for, one for. Just the same thing.
Thank you.
We don't rather agree handle the gas station.
Thank you for the clarification, Keith. All right, at this time, we'll move to public hearing. Um, Linda, if you'll read G one for us, please.
Conduct the first public hearing concerning the annexation of a ninety-five point two seven seven acre tract of land located southeast of Highway eighty-two, west of St. Howard two eighty-nine and east of Preston Club Drive, adjacent to the Sherman City limits and in the city of Sherman's extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Linda, bring it.
Uh, yes, Mayor Council, at the last meeting you approved a annexation scheduling plan of this ninety-five point two seven seven acre tract of land. It's owned by a real owner and requests for the annex. This, uh, G one is the first of two public hearings on that.
Is there anyone here to speak on this side of the city? I don't agree G two for us, please.
Ordinance sixty-two sixty-one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Sherman confirming and validating the reauthorization of the levy and collection of the sales and use tax of one-eighth of one percent to reside, provide revenue for the maintenance and repair of municipal streets as authorized by chapter three twenty-seven of the Texas Tax Code, providing for repealer, finding that meaning at which this ordinance is passed was noted and self into the public as required by law.
Thank you, Linda. Bring it.
Uh, yes, the voters overwhelmingly approved the reauthorization of the one-eighth of one percent street sales tax, uh, in local elections. Our charter requires all levies of tax to be approved by ordinance and this ordinance, uh, confirms the, the voters.
Brenda, is there anyone here to address this side of the city? No, voted we agree, change rate for us, please.
Ordinance sixty-two sixty-two, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Sherman expanding Sherman Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone number seven, southeast of intersection of US Highway seventy-five and Oakland fourteen seventeen, providing for financing of that, providing for separability, finding that meaning at which this ordinance is passed was noted and self into the public as required by law.
Uh, yes, the owner of the property, excuse me, adjacent to the tax investment reinvestment zone where a movie of Earl's located in Districts number seven has requested inclusion in that tax increment reinvestment zone. The existing zone is about twenty-two acres and these additional tracks will add about two hundred and seventy-nine acres. The city's contribution will be fifty percent of our M and L rate on the incremental value. Um, the county is also being asked to contribute fifty percent of their, of their, uh, rate. And this increment will be used for, um, infrastructure improvements and amenities. Uh, the next step, um, in, in this process is to approve the interlocal agreement, which is, uh, later on in this agenda. It's the interlocal with the county. Uh, the committee, uh, the tax investment reinvestment zone committee will then meet a budget project and financing plan, and then that plan will come back to you for city council approval.
Is there anyone here to address this side of the city? The next four items, sixty-two sixty-three, sixty-two sixty-four, sixty-two sixty-five, and sixty-two sixty-six will be, then we get our Linda, you'll read all these, please.
Ordinance sixty-two sixty-three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Sherman and in section eight subsection five-eight ordinance number twenty-two eighty, so as to grant specific use permit to allow a gated airport community in an R-one one-family residential district in the sixteen-hundred to seventeen-hundred blocks of South Gribble Street and thirteen-hundred to fifteen-hundred blocks of East Lake Street, being thirty-two point seven four zero acres in the JV pilot survey abstract number nine sixty-three. Sky Trust LLC owners Strand Systems Engineering Incorporated Surveyor and Strand A and E Eric Cantrell representative, providing for repealer clause, providing that this specific use permit shall be granted subject to certain conditions, providing a penalty not to exceed two thousand dollars, finding that the meaning at which this ordinance is passed was noted and self into the public as required by law. Ordinance sixty-two sixty-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Sherman and in section eight subsection five-eight ordinance number twenty-two eighty, so as to grant specific use permit to allow hammer homes in an R-one one-family residential district in sixteen-hundred to seventeen-hundred blocks of South Gribble Street and thirteen-hundred to fifteen-hundred blocks of East Lake Street, being eleven point four one two acres in the JV pilot survey abstract number nine sixty-three, also being lots one through nine block A, lots one through thirteen dot B, and lots one through twenty-one block C of the proposed Silver Falcon Aviation Community. Sky Trust LLC owners Strand Systems Engineering Incorporated Surveyor and Strand A and E Eric Cantrell representative, providing for repealer clause, providing that this specific use permit shall be granted subject to certain conditions, providing a penalty not to exceed two thousand dollars, finding that the meaning at which this ordinance is passed was noted and self into the public as required by law. Ordinance sixty-two sixty-five, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Sherman and in section eight subsection five-eight ordinance number twenty-two eighty, so as to grant specific use permit to allow patio homes in an R-one one-family residential district in sixteen-hundred to seventeen-hundred blocks of South Gribble Street and thirteen-hundred to fifteen-hundred blocks of East Lake Street, being two point three four three acres in the JV pilot survey abstract number nine sixty-three, also being lots one through twenty-four block D of the proposed Silver Falcon Aviation Community. Sky Trust LLC owners Strand Systems Engineering Incorporated Surveyor and Strand A and E Eric Cantrell representative, providing for repealer clause, providing that this specific use permit shall be granted subject to certain conditions, providing a penalty not to exceed two thousand dollars, finding that the meaning at which this ordinance is passed was noted and self into the public as required by law. Ordinance sixty-two sixty-six, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Sherman and in section twelve ordinance number twenty-two eighty, so as to include certain properties within the C-one retail business district in the sixteen-hundred to seventeen-hundred blocks of South Gribble Street and the thirteen-hundred to fifteen-hundred blocks of East Lake Street, being six point seven zero four acres in the JV pilot survey abstract number nine sixty-three. Sky Trust LLC owners Strand Systems Engineering Incorporated Surveyor and Strand A and E Eric Cantrell representative, providing for repealer, finding that the meaning at which this ordinance is passed was noted and self into the public as required by law.
Thank you, Linda.
Good job.
This is a thirty-two point seven acres with eighty-one lots from residential and commercial development. There will be hangar homes, there'll be homes with hangar access, um, there'll be a restaurant, there'll be a plane wash, there'll be rental cars. The applicants have worked with city departments, texted out the FAA to coordinate this project. The three specific use permits, uh, one for the gated airport community, one for hangar homes, one for patio homes, and the zone change to C-one. All received the seven zero vote to approve this, subject to the staff review letter, if any request.
Is there anyone here to address any of these four, four items this evening? Yes, you'll come forward and state your name.
Eric Cantrell, Australian Architectural.
We'll give back to you just a minute. Anyone else here? Just a minute, Mr. Barr, Linda, if you'll read sixty-two sixty-seven, sixty-two sixty-eight to you, please.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Sherman and in section eight subsection five-eight ordinance number twenty-two eighty, so as to grant a specific use permit to allow duplex in an R-one one-family residential district at twenty-four thirteen North Hickory Street, being lot two, lot one, Men of ours addition, Jose Men of our owner and James Green general contractor, providing for repealer clause, providing that this specific use permit shall be granted subject to certain conditions, providing a penalty not to exceed two thousand dollars, finding that the meaning at which this ordinance is passed was noted and self into the public as required by law. Ordinance sixty-two sixty-eight, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Sherman and in section eight subsection five-eight ordinance number twenty-two eighty, so as to grant a specific use permit to allow duplex in an R-one one-family residential district at twenty-four seventeen North Hickory Street, being lot one, lot one, Men of ours addition, Jose Men of our owner and James Green general contractor, providing for repealer clause, providing that this specific use permit shall be granted subject to certain conditions, providing a penalty not to exceed two thousand dollars, finding that the meaning at which this ordinance is passed was noted and self into the public as required by law.
Thank you, Linda. Mr. Cantrell needs to stand up. Scott.
Yes, each of these requests are for a duplex, they'll be four bedrooms on each side and they will provide eight off-street parking spaces for each one. This one's P and Z and they recommended approval with a seven zero vote, subject to the staff review.
Scott, is there anyone here to address these items this evening?
I'm James Green with Philly Green and I'd be the general contractor representing Jose Men of our.
Thank you. Counsel has any questions? Linda, if you'll read sixty-two sixty-nine for us, please.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Sherman and in section eight subsection five-eight ordinance number twenty-two eighty, so as to grant a specific use permit to allow a cigar lounge and C-one retail business district, central business district at two-twenty-two West Houston Street, being part of lot ten, lot four, O two P Sherman, Laurel Acres Limited owners and Hal Hinton applicant, providing for repealer clause, providing that this specific use permit shall be granted subject to certain conditions, providing a penalty not to exceed two thousand dollars, finding that the meaning at which this ordinance is passed was noted and self into the public as required by law.
Thank you, Linda. Scott.
And this request is to allow a cigar lounge, uh, to run with the fellow barber shop and P and Z recommended approval of this seven zero, subject to the staff review.
Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone here to address this side of the city?
I'm Hal Hinton. Representing for fellow friends there.
Okay. Did you agree here to answer questions?
Uh, I agree.
Okay. We'll be with you in just a moment. Thank you. Linda, if you'll read sixty-two seventy, please.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Sherman and in section eight subsection five-eight ordinance number twenty-two eighty, so as to grant a specific use permit to allow tire sales and automobile repair without door displays in the C-two general commercial district at fifteen twenty one T. Summer Parkway, being zero point eight seven acres in the JV mechanicure survey abstract number seven sixty-three. Alawbin Real Estate LLC owners and Omar Alawbin representative, providing for repealer clause, providing that this specific use permit shall be granted subject to certain conditions, providing a penalty not to exceed two thousand dollars, finding that the meaning at which this ordinance is passed was noted and self into the public as required by law.
Thank you, Linda.
Okay. This specific use permit for the tire sales and auto repair, P and Z voted five to two to approve this, subject to the staff review letter. Uh, they did limit this approval to having two racks outside, two foot by ten foot by six foot, and four passenger vehicle tire stacks not to exceed four tires each stack. All of these shall be flat against the wall of the building and also to remove the northernmost sign that's in front of the building.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here to address this side of the city? Can we, can we throw a voice, please?
Conduct the second public hearing concerning the annexation of a ninety-five point two seven seven acre tract of land located south of US Highway eighty-two, west of St. Howard two eighty-nine and east of Preston Club Drive, adjacent to the Sherman City limits and in the city of Sherman's extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Thank you, Linda. Brenda?
Yes, you remember all the way back to I think G one, uh, we got our first public hearing, uh, on this annexation. This is the required second public hearing. Say one would guard two public hearings, but does not involve any different things.
Thank you, Brenda. Is there anyone here to address this side of the city? Nothing close to public hearing and consider of adoption of the rules. Yes. Counsel?
I'll have a question. It's sort of. Scott, I'm pretty much sixty-two seventy. I like these cowboy stores, all the repaired tire chops. Um, so in the past, we've never really allowed any outdoor, what was the reasoning? We ran a couple racks here, a couple racks there, plenty of some new tires.
Uh, the, the request was for several more racks. They put this limit on it. Uh, council does have the option, not allowing anybody to do it.
So I guess my question is, how do you distinguish between allowing some and some or not? That's just what the P and Z came up with.
Later discussion.
And then who, this was, was a monitor that ongoing, you see this annoying, some tires and racks.
Their specific use permits, if they subject to this, they're likely gonna be at risk of losing a hundred.
And am I correct in this, this is an established business, this has been a, this has been yellow buildings?
This business appeared, this, this business appeared, uh, without any occupancy permits or anything. They just there one morning.
Cause I do notice they roll out.
Oh, they had, they had it all the way out to the end of the paper and we sent them certified letters and invited them in to talk about it and they booked P and Z and everything else.
So are these tire racks that they wanna store outside covered?
No, no.
Scott, now, now tell me this, now, is it uncommon for a provider like one of these national chains to store some exterior tires so that people can come and pick them up? Uh, the, the, the old tires they can have hauled off, is that?
These, these are for new wheel displays. The old ones are usually kept inside or in the back and then picked up.
So these are, these are, just to clarify, these are new tires stored outside with no overhead covers?
These, these are racks on wheels.
They move them outside, but they're stored inside the building when their facilities are closed for business? Is that correct?
Is there sales display?
Yeah.
My opinion on that would be that. I think the main thing is that not quarter mile from there, less than that, we had somewhat the same thing and we didn't allow any outdoor storage. I think that just opens the door and I, I'm all for these guys being in business and for what they're doing, but Texon Parkway is an area that we have, have worked to try to enhance the look of Texon Parkway and I've just always done a, a strong opinion about outdoor storage. But I could stop screening now, there's ways that you can screen it, but it doesn't apply. That's gonna be down the end. So, I mean, I'm all for.
Just get tired, it depends on if it does well or not in the outside.
They have floor displays.
So I don't believe in promotion on that yet, but I don't want to operate to deny the, the use of the building. I think I'll just propose that we do deny any outdoor or make that a stipulation of our approval.
No outside racks to store.
I have a second here.
Okay, that's for sixty-two seventy only. Motion and second. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-two seventy is approved. All right. So counsel, those elements of the most ordinances for sixty-two seventy?
If, if no one has any questions, uh, about these ordinances dealing with the hangar homes, does anybody have any to talk about that? Cause if not, I'd like to make a motion to approve sixty-two sixty-three, sixty-two sixty-four, sixty-two sixty-five, and sixty-two sixty-six.
I have one quick question on that. So we talked about the fuel and, and I have no that closely, but they're not gonna provide private fuel. I mean, that's, that's part of the deal that they won't purchase our, our fuel.
That's, that's correct.
Correct.
Did it seem, did I see something where we were gonna put a fuel bay on their, on that property through the, all that?
That was one being considered right now.
So we have a motion to approve. Any other questions on this? Motion and second.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So we need a motion on sixty-two sixty-one, sixty-two sixty-two, sixty-two sixty-seven, sixty-two sixty-eight, sixty-two sixty-nine.
I wouldn't be opposed to making a motion on all of it if nobody has any questions, but.
I just agree with the duplex, the duplex. That's four bedrooms duplex, if I'm correct. I disagree, so I would vote for that.
Okay.
Sixty-sixty-seven, sixty-two sixty-eight.
Okay, so let's go back.
I'll motion the balance less sixty-two sixty-seven, sixty-two sixty-eight.
Okay, we have a second, hold on.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now, let's take sixty-two sixty-seven, sixty-two sixty-eight. Okay.
I can ask your questions. Do you want to ask questions or just more questions?
I'm just gonna go.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not trying to sway your voter at all, but I do know that we've had duplexes coming for us and it's been four and four, which is very concerning. And then we had them go back and bring us three and three. And the way I read this is two, two?
No, it's four on each side of the street.
On each side.
Eight parking spaces per lot.
Now, let me, let me understand this though. Are you having your own driveway off of Hickory?
Yes.
So you'll have your own driveway off of Hickory?
The duplex has two bedrooms on one side of that duplex and two bedrooms on the other side of duplex. They're actually two duplexes coming together. And so they're just side by side duplexes on two separate parks.
So that, that's.
It's a two, it's a two bedroom duplex.
Oh, okay, okay.
Two bedrooms on this side.
Two, it's eight bedrooms total, but across two different buildings, not a street.
Side by side, not, not across the street, but side by side.
Where is your parking?
Uh, there's no parking in the front.
In the front or have?
It'd be part of the driveway, about a twenty-five foot driveway.
Will there be any grass or is it just gonna be solid?
Lot of grass, all the trees, all the stuff that are stipulated by the city of Sherman for knowing what we have to do.
Well, so two and two.
Okay, then I, I make a motion to approve sixty-two sixty-seven, sixty-two sixty-eight.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
With two bedrooms on each side, four per lot.
Yes. Two, two, two duplex.
Two.
Two and two.
Probably had before and then it was four and four.
Right, yeah, that's a monster.
That's what I thought it was.
Okay. All in favor?
Any others?
All right, we're to the conservative. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted and will motion without discussion unless a council member has sent a request to specific item to discuss, but it will serve. We consent agenda, the items H three, H four, H five, H six, H seven, H two, J two, J one, J two, J three, J four.
Questions, I move to approve the consent agenda. Thank you, Steve.
Is that a second?
Yes.
Okay. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Consent approved, thank you. Linda, if you'll read sixty-two, sixteen-five, sixty-two for us, please.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Sherman authorizing execution of amended and restated Moore Street agreement between the city of Sherman and the Munson Realty Company for the construction of West Moore Street from West Travis Street to Edin fourteen seventeen in the city of Sherman, finding that the meaning at which this resolution is passed was noted and self into the public as required by law.
Thank you, Linda. Ronnie?
Yes, um, Mayor, Council, if you will recall, we've had a couple of actions relating to this item for our agreement with Munson Family Realty and, uh, with the representative of John Frigari. Um, so there are a few cleanup items that we needed to, uh, have in this agreement, uh, which is included here in this intended item tonight. Uh, there was a couple of other items that were more than just administrative, but were necessary as part of the project. They're also included in this committed agreement. Uh, one of those, uh, the, the primary one really is the, um, um, requirement that the city, uh, construct the, uh, pond one, which was, uh, which is part of the, uh, drainage structure for this area. Uh, it would, it would serve, uh, capacity for the new Sherman High School, for, uh, Moore Street, which is part of this agreement, of course, to be constructed, which is a city asset. It would, it would serve capacity for the new Sherman High School, for Moore Street, which is part of this agreement, of course, to be constructed, which is a city asset. And then also that some of the drainage for Village Center, which is part of the plant development. So in addition to that, the spoils from the digging out upon one would be used in the construction of Moore Street. So it, it seemed appropriate that we just tie all of those things together. And I'm going to amend the, amend the original agreement in that way. The other item that needed to be clarified was, just to put a anticipated timeframe on this. We expect that we can be done, or substantially done with this project, phase one of this project by the end of next year, December thirty-first of twenty-twenty. So this is the, what we believe will be the last time that you see this agreement, if you so choose to approve this. Just to tidy things up and to move on to the next, next part of the project.
Thank you, thank you, all. Counsel, any questions?
Well, yeah, I have some specific questions about the contract language and some of the items on the contract, but there, there's a few places where it talks about the city reimbursing. For expenses possibly prepaid by the developer, and so I'd like to get into that a little bit, but then. Also, this place where we said we're going to pay them three percent project management fee, which I've never seen in one of these contracts that we've had come through, I'm saying it's not there, I've just not seen it. And there's one other item in here that says that we would agree to reimburse them up to fifteen million dollars for any construction of public facilities, which I don't think probably contradicts anything that we've given direction on in the past. So I'm just a little confused about those two items, and it's going to be some clarification.
Okay, and what was the, so in reverse order, the fifteen million, the three percent management fee, and then plus the percent?
There's some reimbursements of some expenses, but really I just need clarification on that, there's no, doesn't seem to be a limit, and it doesn't seem to specify anything in particular, so I'm not saying that that's a bad thing, I just need a little more clarification.
Okay, so let me take those in that order, so the expense reimbursement comes because where we've been up to this point is. In order to move forward with some of these other projects, like the sanitary sewer, there's been some preliminary engineering done on the sanitary sewer, which had some impact on Masquerade Plant. So there was some legitimate kind of design and engineering cost that because we didn't have a contract in place originally, that they bore, that really relates to public infrastructure. And so the expense reimbursement simply reverses them for those types of costs that we would have to spend anyway, that just were borne by them initially, that we need to, that we need to repay. Is this on still? Okay, let me just try.
What's the estimate?
Um, so, Clint, what is our, so these really relate to things like Jones Carter fees, and our, the other fees in there were related to.
Environmental and historical.
What?
Say that again?
There were some environmental, historical studies, page one environmental was done on the project, first part of the sewer plant and the detention analysis.
Right, so.
And then, then included in the total, two point five million?
So the two point five is our estimate, and that is for the construction of Moore, for the design of Moore, for the engineering of Moore. For the construction of the western two lanes of Moore, which is, Moore is going to ultimately be a four-lane median divided thoroughfare. And then Pond One construction, all of those costs they just mentioned are the estimate of the two and a half million dollars that would be used for that.
I thought we approved that in Moore Street.
Yeah, so this, yeah, so this is, this is an amendment of the original agreement that was approved a few months ago. So there's, there already exists a Moore Street agreement that was adopted, approved a few months ago. This modifies that in the ways that I described in my opening comments, with, with those, with those modifications. The fifteen million was in the original thing, it was in our master agreement with Munson, it's been all, it's been in all the agreements. And it's meant to set the cap at what our investment will be for public infrastructure out there. Kind of taking these out of order a little bit.
We had some discussions between the original discussions and now, and I think we've kind of clarified some of those things in terms of the real.
Yeah.
So I was just trying to get some clarifications, I know we had talked about not doing a fifteen million dollar agreement.
So, well, so, so those would come with, our actually spending of that money comes through future agreements. In other words, we set a cap in, really, I think it's mentioned in all of those groups, that we've had the master agreement, we had the sanitary sewer agreement, we have the Moore Street agreement. We had one of the other ones, John, Green Belt Letter of Intent. So all of those reference our spending in the future, subject to projects that have yet to be approved by council. So the, each of these would have to come back to council for approval to spend dollars for any of those projects. This is project number one of any projects that we would do that would fit under that cap. So Moore Street is a multi, got two or three different pieces to it, as I just described, but it would be kind of project one of future projects that have yet to be approved.
So I'd like a little.
Oh, I'm sorry, and I didn't address, and I didn't address the three percent. The three percent is a feature that we have in many development agreements, this isn't the first agreement that we have that in. We've had, it's difficult to have that, some be in there for developer agreements where the city and developer are jointly working to put in public infrastructure, roads, storm drainage, water sewer, lighting, et cetera, et cetera. So three percent is the cap that we have set on those fees. It's in, talking with other developers, that's probably lower than, that's certainly lower than was requested, no offense. But is, is on par with what we've done, we've done the three percent on other agreements as well, so that's where the three percent came from. And it's really to cover costs that they would have in managing things that affect their property, that might otherwise affect their property. And their cost of, the penetrated cost in engineering and design and review of this public infrastructure development.
Well, for me anyways, and I'll let you guys kind of speak your mind on that and stuff, but for me, the cap is a little bit different than the language that I read in this agreement. This period, pretty much states we're going to give them up to fifteen million dollars of any public facilities to be reimbursed, and also we're going to give them a three percent fee. There's no limit, this is the maximum we're going to pay, it just says this is what we're going to do.
Well, the three percent is, I believe it says up to three percent, so that's, that's a different.
Yeah, except for the two, we're talking about the two different things.
So, so that, that's the management fee that we just discussed, that is, is standard and typical in our other development agreements.